April 8, 2025 at 6 o'clock PM. Before we start, I want to take a moment of silence in recognition of Marysville Police Officer Osmer Rodarte. He was killed in the line of duty recently on March 26th. And so if we could just have a... Thank you. And, oh, I need one other thing, but we need to talk about closed session real quick. We just came out of closed session. I'm going to ask Jeff to speak about that.
The council did meet in closed session for the item identified in the agenda. No reportable action was taken. Council gave direction to staff.
And before we, while we take the pledge tonight, I just want to keep in mind the many sacrifices that have been given over the years by our first responders as well, but also, you know, the continued need to fight for the freedoms that we all share and love.
Did you want to do roll call first?
It's on this agenda. It was lower than this, wasn't it?
Are we doing roll call or are we doing?
We're going to do pledge allegiance because...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, roll call, please, Carol.
Councilmember Youngblood?
Here.
Councilmember Cartwright?
Here.
Councilmember Clark Kretz?
Here.
Councilmember Cortez?
Here.
Mayor Ring?
Here.
Okay, then we need to adopt the agenda. Is there anybody, is any, anything that needs to be changed on the agenda? Nope. Can I get a motion to...
I move to adopt.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed abstentions? Okay. Now we move on to matters of interest to council members. I have one just real quick. Today is the two-year anniversary of Roger's passing. He was our previous finance director. And you may have noticed the yellow ribbons out front, and so those are in memory of him. And I want to say that our finance department, current finance department, is doing a great job to fill his shoes in that role, but as a colleague and as a friend, he's, we still miss him. So, yeah, I'm sorry that I have two things of bad news right at the beginning here. Does anybody else have anything on matters of interest? You did? Yep, bring it up.
Okay. Cal Cities reached out to us. There is a bill coming up called SB 79. It's like, it's...
Transit orient, thank you, oriented development and basically looking to, again, another way for small towns, I guess, to lose our control of where housing goes. And this would make it so that any, any transit-oriented area will have, you know, immediate access to getting developed up to seven stories high. And so even though we are a small town, I would hope that we would oppose a law such as this. So I'd like to maybe bring it back.
Yeah, I also, you know, I knew you were talking about this, and so I also had something that the AB 306 is a, is an assembly bill that they're considering, which puts a six-year moratorium on state and local building standards, which means you can't, the local jurisdictions can't make any new housing regulations, building regulations for six years unless it has to do with safety or fire safety or water efficiency. There's like three things that they can do. But it's just another example of, I think, the state trying to wrestle, take the local control away from us. And I think if there's any other bills that you guys are aware of, I wouldn't be opposed to seeing something like this at a future council meeting.
Can I tag on to that before I do my matters of public interest?
Yeah, go ahead.
So when I was at Cal Cities, and I'm still trying to figure that out for us, I haven't gotten the bill number yet. They did call me. We had, we had our meeting with Roger Neelo, and they actually called me in the middle of it, so I wasn't able to get back to them, and then it was Friday afternoon. There is a bill that they are willing to support and they're trying to look into that actually is going to probably hopefully prevent all that, plus it's going to amend the housing element that will help us going forward. They're, they're feeling that basically it's going to, it's going to go through. It's still, we're still going to have a housing element, but it's going to go like, it's going to help us with the general plan and stuff. So I'm still looking at that. I'm trying to get us in touch with the lobbyist for housing. He was willing to help us when I told him about what's happening. And obviously, it's this closed session, so I'm not going to say it, you know, what's happening, but with our development. So with that being said, that there is hope. So while you are hearing about these tools, they are very important and they're concerning, there is hope for us in terms of the housing element situation, that they are looking at that and realizing it maybe wasn't constructed in the best light and that there can be, there's an amendment that's going to make it better.
If I can make a suggestion, maybe over the next month, over the next couple, two weeks, we can get you a list of bills. The council can get stats, a list of bills that, that we are following. Maybe we can get a letter of support or opposition for those on maybe a future, on the next council meeting, if we have time? Yeah, okay. Anybody else have any, does that cover? Okay, anybody else have any matters of interest?
Do you have anything before I go? What about you? Do you have, you're done with yours?
Did you have any?
Okay. So I met with Mayor Ring and I met with our town manager yesterday. And town manager, I'm going to let him kind of discuss this, but I was given this complaint form that we basically, I discussed with Wes, and he already pretty much knew about it, and I'm going to let him kind of, I think that's what we agreed upon, right, that you were going to touch on?
Yeah, thank you.
So I'm bringing up the complaint form that the, the town citizens are very interested in, but he already knew about it when I expressed it to him, so I'll let you go forward with it.
I appreciate that. So we did receive a, a letter, and there were some recommendations to improve the complaint form process for the town of Loomis. I know the people that put that letter together and the recommendations worked really hard on it. So I, I know staff internally, we're going to take a good look at it and see what we can do to adopt some of it. I'm a little fond of it myself because it's, kind of helped develop it from my past jurisdiction and stuff. So I think there's, there's merit to it, and there's some things we can do to kind of always can do to improve the complaint process for the community.
Thank you.
Just for, for the public to be aware, this wasn't a complaint form that somebody was complaining. It was a way of...
It's a process of accountability, so that way if there's things that happen in the town of Loomis, and not to interrupt you, Mayor Ring, but since I didn't finish what I said I would finish, and I apologize, basically, any kind of complaints that we have in the future, if they're, no matter what angle they are, if there's a complaint, a valid complaint, you can file a form. There'll be a tracking process, so that way you're not just coming in saying, I complained about this, whatever happened. There'll be an actual formal process of it being put through the motions. So this form, hopefully, after we go through and create it or amend it, because since it sounds like you already kind of have one going, Wes from Colfax, well, you can complain about anybody, anything. You can complain about yourself.
Confidential.
Yeah, anything. It's confidential. It's obviously, it's a formal thing. It's to be taken as serious, but it can be, you can complain about anybody.
All right. Anybody, that was everybody. Okay, so let's move on to the town manager report. Wes?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As always, my town manager report is in the agenda. There's a couple items I want to highlight for the council and the public. First is the, the town of Loomis organization assessment. This is looking at the effectiveness and efficiency of the town operations. We have a final draft final here. So Moss Adams will be presenting the findings of the org assessment at the April 15 special meeting we're having. And the reason the timing, why it wasn't tonight, is there was some finalization that we still needed to do, and we couldn't get it done in time for the meeting. And it's important that we actually get this done and reviewed and comments back because this could lead to developing the budget, so we need to get it done timely. So that's why we're asking for the special meeting on the 15th. So the WW Mollings Downtown Overflow Parking, I think we're all aware, this is kind of a focus of council, is trying to find a temporary solution to address some of the, the parking challenges we have here. I want to highlight and thank the, the members of the public, the professional people that actually are in this industry that have donated their time or equipment. Scott Paris Enterprises has contributed to the project, TB Mollner, Katie Mollner, and Al Fragioni on there. And LIG has donated all of the equipment to do the work. The project, the actual improvements will begin April 14th and should be done by April 20th on there. So I really want to thank everybody in the community. The council asked for volunteers to step up and help these projects, and I know we've gotten other letters from interested parties in the community, and we're going to be combining those volunteer expertise and then utilizing them in future projects as well, too.
So if you don't mind, Mayor, is that...
I wanted, go ahead, but I had a quick comment on that, too.
Yeah, that's exactly what I wanted to do, because I was waiting, I didn't want to do my interest, because I was waiting for him to announce that. But I just really wanted to acknowledge, like what you were saying, but like Al Fragioni, TB Mollner, they're, these people are coming in on their spring break on their own time. They are, it's a beautiful example of the community coming together, and I just really, really wanted to thank them again for all of their efforts. If you guys want to come out and check it out as it goes, I, I think we're going to all be trying to pop in there and just, you know, continue to thank them and see how it's going and maybe get some pictures with them, you know, by the, by the big, heavy equipment. But it's going to be an exciting thing, just, just really building that community. The other thing, well, nevermind, I'll stop there, but, but thank you again, community. LIG, TB, and Katie Mollner and Al Fragioni on his own time. Thank you.
And it was something that we asked for, and so, I mean, we were really pushing for that. But I did want to comment that there is an FAQ on this on the website about it, so if you have any questions about it, if what we're saying didn't answer your questions, there's answers on the website as well, so check that out. And if you still have questions after that, then, you know, feel free to reach out and ask. Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, that's all I have.
Okay, I was going to say, are you done? But you are. Okay. And now I have the Loomis Library and Community Learning Center librarians' reports.
All right. Good evening. I just wanted to go over some other things that we have coming up at the library this month, as usual. We do have some, a few extra things, because next week being spring break, we wanted to provide some activities, especially for the kids to be able to do. So starting with kids programs, on April 16th, we have for kids ages eight to 11 mad peep scientists, where you'll be doing experiments with peeps. And there are still some spaces available, however, it is registration required for that. So if you or someone you know is interested, please call us ASAP. That's going to be, like I said, on April 16th from 2:30 to 3:30. We have our Master Builders Club on April 19th from 10:30 to 11:30. That's our Lego club. We are doing a nature journaling with the master gardeners for ages eight to 11 on April 19th. My daughter actually got to participate in that through her Girl Scout troop, and they had a blast. So I would highly recommend, if you have any kids who are at all interested in nature or, you know, learning more about plants or animals or any of that, that's a great opportunity, and that's going to be from 12:30 to 2:30. We have our Japanese Storytime on April 23rd from 10:30 to 11:30. And then on April 26th, from 10:30 to 11:30, we have our Read to a Dog program. And of course, we have Storytime every Friday. For adults, we have a couple genealogy groups. The first one will be on April 11th from 1 to 3. It's a genealogy study group hosted by the Placer County Genealogical Society. And the second one is genetic genealogy. It's a DNA study group, and that's from 10 to noon. I don't have the date for that one, actually, so I will have to get you that date later. And then we also have our UC Master Gardeners are going to be doing a presentation on tomato mastery on April 12th from 10:30 to 11:30, but that will be actually at the Veterans Hall, because our last UC Master Gardener program drew so many people that we ran out of room for everybody. So they're going to do it at the Veterans Hall this time. And then for general audiences, we have our Let's Learn Hiragana, which is a type of Japanese writing, and that's a class for anyone ages 12 and up, including adults. If you're interested in that and learning that, that's going to be on April 18th from 3:30 to 4:30. And then our Friends of the Library will be hosting their annual, or their quarterly book sale, which will be on April 25th from 10 to 4, and April 26th from 10 to 3. And of course, all of the proceeds from that do come back to the library in the form of donations from the Friends of the Library and support from the Friends of the Library. So it's a great fundraiser. And then finally, I just wanted to let you all know that anytime is a great time to come into the library, but this week especially is a great time to come into the library because it's National Library Week. And so we want to encourage everyone to come in this week and say hi. And then today is actually, as part of National Library Week, we also have National Library Workers Day, which is today. And so I just want to give a little shout out to my staff, Brittany, Chris, Olivia, and Kristen. They are the ones that do all the heavy lifting and make the magic happen, and I appreciate them so much. And I just wanted to share with you all how much I appreciate the wonderful people we have working at the library.
And we appreciate you.
Thank you. And that's all I have for you guys.
You did.
Yes, to just say what these two are saying is the same, but, you know, we are so lucky because you're from Loomis and you're running our library. And it's, it's just an incredible, wonderful thing for us to be able to have you for our community, and thank you so much as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, feel undulged me. I actually got invited to go meet with the library staff today and hang out for a little while, and, and I agree with Sarah's opinion. Her staff is amazing. Loomis is very fortunate to have what we have here.
Agreed. Yeah. All right. Anything else? Thanks, Sarah. And now we have the Loomis Chamber of Commerce update.
Hillary. Good evening. Hello. I'm filling in for Heather. She has six children. Our update is that we have our Business Expo coming up in, next Thursday, a week from this Thursday, on April 17th, held at Horton Iris Farm. And if you have not been out there, it's a great, great time to come. At the Business Expo and Vendor Fair, we will have 24 booths. We'll have an evening of networking, business connections, and community collaboration. And our business showcase is quite a range of variety, so it'll be fun. We've got jewelry and all the way down to financial planning. So it's a very small fair. Also, you can network with other people, so that's best. We have giveaways and raffles. I think we're going to have at least 24. It's a potluck event also, so you don't have to bring anything if you're a guest. The vendors are bringing it, and you come in and enjoy food and drinks and look around and get to know people. And then we have our Leadership Loomis coming up. That is open to Loomis Basin residents and business members who want to gain a better understanding of the inner workings of the local business and government and how they affect the community. Participants will attend a full-day session once a month on the second Wednesdays from September to March. Topics covered range from town history, public safety, education, small businesses, nonprofits, and more. And the monthly sessions will be hosted by various local businesses and organizations. Applications for you to come are online. The tuition fee is $300. And we're still, Loomis Chamber is still seeking a few sponsors for this program, so you can contact Heather, manager of LoomisChamber.com, or call the office. And last but not least, we have our community events calendar, which is being used so much. It's really great. And you go onto LoomisChamber.com and submit your event, and the host, who is Heather, will approve the event. And it's just been a really good tool for us to have.
And I think we're working sort of on getting the calendar, coordinating with this town's calendar. Are we trying to figure that? I thought I had heard that. Am I wrong? Maybe I'm wrong.
There's always a work in progress. There's something in progress on there. But I know the Chamber does a great job in capturing all the community events, and, and we did identify, you know, the town's website calendar could be, needs to be updated as well, too. And that's part of our PR consulting and doing that, trying to get that communication out to the community. In the coming months, you'll see that enhance.
Okay, cool. Your calendar is great.
It's working very well. We're pretty proud of it. Thank you.
Nope. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have the Allied Agencies Activities Update. We probably should put these in an order so that we don't always, every month, it's always like, who's going to go first? Who's going to go first? It's a surprise.
I'm going first this month because I have another meeting at 7 o'clock, so I usurped the sheriff's office. So thanks to them for letting me go first, and I thank you all for allowing us to be here and talk about what's going on in the district. You'll see on the slides here, we've got the usual calls, mostly medical in nature, about 80% between medical and good intent. Hotspots are in the same as always. You know, I just love coming up here and showing you guys where stuff's going on, so it's exciting for me. Next slide, please. 334 total calls, 69% medical, and then you lump in service and good intent. We've got 84, 678, 94%. That's quick math off the top of my head. So really, what we're all about here in the town and in the district is service to the community. The track really runs the same year after year, and we see that consistently. Next slide, please. This month, I'm happy to report, and we were crushing it on getting out the door and getting to your house. I don't know, traffic's less, whatever, but eight minutes, if you remember, is our goal, so at 8:02, we're right there. And overall, for the district, at 8:23, couldn't be more happy and proud of my members for getting out the door and getting to you on time and as quick as we can. 41 EMS calls in the, for Station 18, two fires, 18 others, so a total of 61 calls here in the town. Next slide, please. Station 19 reopened, Cavett Stallman and Auburn Folsom, with a bunch of quotes and asterisks on there, okay? We, we closed that station in September of '22 because of revenue gaps, I'll call them. And through watching what was happening in our district and trying to deliver the best service we can, we found a way strategically, without any additional revenue, to move some puzzle pieces around and improve our first unit on-scene response time for our biggest call volume, which is medical. So we took an ambulance, we moved it to that station to quote-unquote "open" it. There's no extra fire suppression, but that ambulance should be quicker to those calls on the Auburn Folsom corridor and now coming down this way as well. We still have a three-person fire engine up at Station 20, so it's spreading the resources a little thinner to better serve our community. We're working with PCWA on a hydrant inspection program. We're excited to partner with them in that aspect so that the hydrants in your community will start to be checked on a regular basis to ensure they're operating, they're up to speed. However, I would like to thank the local community members that have gone out and started painting the hydrants. Thank you very much to whoever you are. Much appreciated. I believe Mr. Straub is involved in that somewhere. Thank you very much. So thank you to them. I had some pictures that I left out of the slide, so. And in March, our Fire Marshal, Jeff Engolia, came up here with PCWA and Master Gardeners and somebody else that's escaping me. We did a presentation. This place was packed, jam-packed, great presentation on home hardening and wildfire prevention mitigation, very well attended. Your town is very interested in what's going on in the fire service. Springtime. It's beautiful out today. Enjoy that weather, but if you're out mowing your lawn or doing stuff, make sure you're storing your fuel appropriately so that we don't get any fires. Don't fill up your lawnmower after you've been mowing. That's a bad idea. Carefully dispose of rags. If you're doing some touch-up around the house, make sure you lay your rags out, preferably on the driveway or someplace non-flammable, so they can dry and make sure they don't spontaneously combust, because that is actually a thing. If you're going to grill, check your grill. When's the last time you went out? Check the hose connection, make sure everything's working good. Time to start pulling those dead leaves away from your home and cleaning up and getting ready for the springtime. And clean out your clothes dryer, something people don't typically think of, but all that lint doesn't just get caught in the screen, it goes down in the pipe. But, you know, you may want to get in there with a hose, clean all that stuff out, and keep your house fire safe for the springtime. I owe you all a contract for our parking lot. I wanted to let you know that I haven't forgotten, but we are a small shop, and we have attorneys that we're working with diligently to get this to you, so we're working as hard and as fast as we can on getting a contract to you that you all can review and move forward. We're super excited about the opportunity to partner with you, just sometimes we have some things that we have to jump through. So appreciate your patience, and with that, I'll answer any questions that you may have.
I just want to say, I cleaned out my dryer recently, and I found almost, you know, over $5 worth of change just in my...
I should probably clean out my dryer.
Fantastic.
Totally pays to do that.
So not only is it a safety issue, but we get a little more wealth back in our pockets. I like it.
Does anybody have any?
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I'm sure we'll talk about it at the end about our safety committee meeting, but I just wanted to thank you very much, Chief, for all the extra work when we brought that concern to you. You got right on it, and I really appreciate that, so thank you for all your work on that with the fire hydrants and PCWA. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you. With that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to say, okay, we'll go with the sheriff's then.
So I just have a couple of things for you. The stats are not current. We're going through a job change in that particular position, and they were, I just realized that they're February stats, so.
That's okay.
I don't want to reread the February stats for you, but the only, I think I have only two things for you. One, the traffic mitigation meeting took place on just this last Monday that passed, and that is a meeting where I meet with, or we meet as a group, the California Highway Patrol, both school districts that are here in the township, and, let's see, and the town. And so we discuss problem areas or current projects, things that are going well, things that are not going well. And I think it was a, it's always a successful meeting, getting all the, all those parties together in the same room and be able to talk about the problems that we need to improve upon. So if there are anything, or if there is anything that ever comes up that you recognize in your neighborhoods or on the street that you think needs attention, please bring them forward. We love bringing them to the meeting, round-tableing them, and seeing how we can improve any type of traffic flow, safety concerns, anything like that that occurs within the township. A lot of our topics are around the schools, of course, but we, we talk about other, you know, areas also. So that, and then I'll leave you with, I traveled to Las Vegas over the weekend and competing in it, competed in a, on my days off on a 20-person relay. This is a law, this is the largest law enforcement event in the nation. Teams come from all over the world, Australia, I saw, all over the country, and it's a running race, 120-mile roughly running race that occurs from the town of Baker all the way into downtown Las Vegas. It's, like I said, 20 persons that hand a baton, one to the next, all 20 legs. So my lips are a bit chapped, and I'm a little, a little sunburned from it, but, yep, representing the town of Loomis and the sheriff's office. So we took 17th place. It was a cool event. With that, if you, if you have any questions, please ask. We're going to bring up Lieutenant Doolittle to talk about some of the town's...
Yeah, 17th in the world is nothing to sneeze at.
That's good.
You just said.
In the nation, that's good.
Jeff left out one thing. He was just nominated to the Police Officer Olympics Hall of Fame for all his members. Extremely proud of him. I'm sure you just forgot to mention that, right? Yeah, right? Right? April 26th, down in Granite Bay, we did the Meet with Public Safety a couple of weeks ago over here. Same thing on April 26th, from 1:00 to 2:30 PM at the Granite Bay Library. Our fire partners are gonna be there, CHP's gonna be there, we're all gonna be there. We're pretty fortunate. I'm obviously biased. I think we have the best sheriff in the state, but he's very much involved in, or very much desires to get us as much training as possible. So myself and a few of my part, quite a few of my partners are gonna be attending a mandatory fire training next, week after next. It's a three-day ICS course, which is put on through FEMA and OES. I've already had it, but you can never have too much training. We're gonna really start ramping up for fire season. In addition to that, in the next month and a half, two months, we're gonna be doing our multiple-day fire scenarios with all the allied agencies around and really go. We've come a long way, and it's because of our sheriff. He's really invested in this. There's the need now. You know, in 2009, when the 49er fire happened in Auburn, it was horrible, right? And you're like, how could something like this happen? It's so big. And then you look at other areas now, Paradise, Santa Rosa, and it's just a fraction of the damage. So a lot of investment into our training with our fire partners, which we're looking forward to. And then the last thing I have, we've obviously, with business owners and residents, we've had some concerns with Walnut Street and Taylor Road. So hearing that, we went into maximum enforcement, maximum education. From March 25th until Sunday, we conducted 111 traffic stops, just based on people running that stop sign. Out of that, 76 people were cited, most for the stop sign violation, a few might have been, or were suspended, or no insurance. So not all the citations, 76 citations were for the stop sign, but there were 111. And because our stat system, there's so many changes, I actually went through and counted each call, pulled up each date and counted, you know, one by one with little tally marks and everything. So I think it shows that, you know, it was over 80% are from the area, Newcastle, Penrean, Loomis, and Rockland, right? And then it was 81, give or take, and then the rest were from Lincoln, Sacramento, and other areas that may not be familiar with the roadway. So.
Wow.
Anybody have any questions?
No, but I just want to say, thank you so much for that quick response for that.
Of course.
Because, you know, we were finding that, you know, you could see the videos of people and buses even going through that. It was so scary.
I actually went out in my unmarked car just to kind of, well, three, four weeks ago, I was coming out from the pizza place, having dinner, and somebody blew through the stop sign at about 25 miles an hour, and that's what really caught my attention. So it was already on our radar, and then the bus incident happened. And so I went out in my unmarked car. I have lights on it and everything, and sat out there for 25, 30 minutes one day, and a handful of people stopped. Everybody else, I mean, maybe four, five miles an hour, but there was only a handful. So I actually stopped, someone wrote a ticket. At the same time, another deputy was writing a ticket for the same thing. So I don't, that education and enforcement's gonna continue. We're really hoping to get the word out. I know I've talked to the town manager about a couple of options about messaging and everything so that we can try to fix the problem for everybody's safety.
It is an issue. My father-in-law goes to the post office all the time. He always complains about, he almost always gets hit crossing the street.
Oh, yeah, totally.
And uses the crosswalk, and he's like, I am!
Right, right. It's, I mean, how, it's relatively new. I mean, in the grand, the big picture of things and people, but we should be, people should be getting used to it by now, you know?
But, yeah, thank you for everything that you guys.
Of course. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And then we have the UC Master Gardeners.
I think we have a slide we can show you, but I'll start with, that's okay, I'll start with numbers for last month. So we welcomed over, almost 500 visitors into the garden last month. We had one tour, which is, somebody requested a private tour. We had one educational session, and we had two youth activities, and that was our Kids in the Garden, which one of those was Sarah's daughter's Girl Scout trip. So that was really fun. So total of 267 hours that were voluntary hours by Master Gardeners last month in the garden. Sarah mentioned already that we are gonna be doing our Tomato Mastery on the 12th at 10:30 in the Vets Hall. That's because we exceeded capacity in the community room last month by a number, we had to turn people away, and not wanting to anger the fire department. We want to make sure we have room for everybody. So if it's any indication, we've already had on our last post for the Tomato Mastery workshop that we have, we've already had 3,000 hits on just the most recent post we had. So hopefully we won't exceed, well, hopefully we will, but hopefully we will be able to accommodate all those folks in the Vets Hall. And then in May, we also have a fire-scaping talk session that we're also gonna be doing in the Vets Hall. So somebody mentioned tonight, the talk that was here, and that was, that they mentioned that Master Gardeners were here, and that was Kevin Marini. And Kevin Marini will be giving the talk at, on May 10th in the Vets Hall. And so we'll make sure that's well-advertised. I believe it's starting at 10:30 on that day, a little early, maybe 10 o'clock. We'll make sure that's advertised. I'll make sure that gets on to the Chamber's awesome calendar, because that's a great way to get the word out. But I would ask that if you know folks who are interested in that, it'll be the same thing that Kevin got to talk about here, but more of it, and probably have more time for Q and A and things like that. So really happy about that, because we do have that second garden, second Saturday in the garden. And so we do get a lot of feedback from your community, from this community, about what's on their mind. And so this happened about a month and a half, two months ago. People were coming in and asking what they could do. And so we were able to kind of, we had a different presentation planned for May, we were able to turn kind of on a dime and cancel that and schedule this. So it's really hoping to address a community concern. So what's new there, continuing with the fire, whole fire theme, the Fire Station Landscape Project that we've been talking about. So last, I think it was last month, our academic advisor, Bruno Petone, he and I went to the South Placer Board Meeting, and he told them what we were planning to do here. And they were very enthusiastic and supportive, so we've gotten their go-ahead. So we're moving ahead with that and putting plans together for that. They also mentioned that they'd like to see that at other fire stations in the area. And we said, let's start with this one and see how it goes. So, but excited about that. Our youth program, I mentioned it before, it's called Kids in the Garden, and it's been very successful. So word is getting out now in the community. We've had several Girl Scout troops that have come through already. Last, April 2nd, we hosted 82, 86 graders, sorry, from actually outside of the area, but 86 graders that came through and did the whole, the whole thing. It was quite a big deal, and 20 drivers. We had about 100 people in the garden for that, that day. So that's been, the library is taking sign-ups right now for that, the workshop that'll be on the 19th. If you know of, if there are kids in your world or whatever, I would strongly encourage you to sign up. It's really designed for kids 8 to 12, but we can accommodate a little bit either way. So the picture in the middle there is of one of our Master Gardeners. So we did a presentation, the one that we, the one that we outgrew the room. It was on raised bed gardening, and she built, we built a raised bed, she built that raised bed. And just so you know, we're, that bed was built for the Spice Club, which is a very popular activity at the library. So they're gonna be using that, that raised bed. Spring blooms, yes, the garden is in bloom. So I would highly recommend, if you need a moment of zen, and I'm sure you all do, you have stressful jobs, just take a walk through the garden. It's very, very relaxing, and it's really, it's really popping right now. It's beautiful. We are gonna have our spring open house on June 7th, and it's actually from 9:00 to 2:00 that day, so it'll be a longer, that's a bigger deal, where we have maybe some vendors come in, and we're there all day, and we have some activities and some workshops and things like that. So the first spring open house we had, had 150 visitors. The second, the fall open house we did, we had 300 visitors. That was on the same day as the Fruit Shed Fest, and we will do that again this year because that was very successful. And the last thing on there is the Rooted and Learn, Rooted and Learning, Flourishing and Giving. So UC ANR has a Giving Day every year, and it's a 24-hour period. We're gonna be having in the garden a Giving Day fundraiser on May 15th from 4:00 to 6:00. And we have a lot of fun things planned. So we have some giveaways, we have appetizers we'll be serving, we're gonna have live music, we're working on a couple of other things that I really can't share yet because I don't know if they'll come to fruition, but we have a photo booth, so you can come out and take your picture, you know, kind of like that. So and hopefully post on social media and all those things. So more to come on that, but it's a big day of giving for us. It is one of our major fundraisers. It's really the only one that we do that UC ANR supports through the year. So we're gonna make a big deal out of that. So hopefully, we'll see you all there sometime between 4:00 and 6:00 that evening, that afternoon. And I think that's all. I have any questions for me?
Do real quick, I don't know if you've talked to the school district at all about getting tours in there, but if you haven't, I can, if you are okay with it, I can send her your information.
I'd love that. In fact, I can send you the flyer, and maybe you can use that to send on. We have a flyer that kind of explains it. Probably we're nearing the end of the school year now, I think, in May. However, we could start up as early as September. We're planning to continue this. So we, it was a grant that we, we were awarded from California Native Plant Society, and we've just about, we, by the end of next month, we will have fulfilled the obligations of the grant. But we're really proud of this program, and we think it's worth going forward with. So we think that we're gonna continue to fund it through the garden, and so we would love to have local schools come out. Exactly what we would look like. So thank you. Yeah, I'll send that to you. Any other questions?
Anybody else? Okay.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Next, we have recognitions and proclamations, but I do not see Ed here. Okay, then we will come back to that when he shows up. All right, now is the time for public comments for items not on the agenda. This time is reserved for those in the audience who wish to address the council on subjects that are not already on the agenda. Each speaker is allowed three minutes of time. The audience should be aware that the council may not discuss details or vote on any non-agenda items. However, we may refer your concerns to staff or ask that an item be placed on a future agenda. So does anybody have any public comment for items not on the agenda?
Eva Marshall on Cathy Way in Loomis. And after following all that, I feel almost like Debbie Downer up here, but I feel like I'm the needle in the haystack at the moment, and I need to pick away a little bit. I spoke last month about the conditional permits, conditional use permits, and businesses adjacent to me in the ILT zone. I stated I was fearful of the loud activity that might resume as the weather got nicer, and that the planning status reports had dropped these particular businesses from the report, even though their conditions had not been met. First off, council had instructed staff to reach out to me, which I'm still waiting to happen. One of those businesses did, in fact, create some loud noises that were audible within my home. I was in the center of my home, in my office, and I'm hearing these loud metallic crashing noises. And then another time, they were out there pressure washing their vehicles with some very loud pressure washers, and we're talking hour, two hours at a time. And I can hear that inside my home. One of the things I've been complaining about for years. I did call the Town Hall, and of course, both those times were Fridays. No one's picking up phones on Fridays. And I did leave a message for Christie in the Planning Department, because she was familiar with the conditional uses that were being put on these businesses. And I did check, there is no button for code enforcement. So you can't leave them, you can't leave code enforcement a message. So I opted to go to planning. And part of the problem is that because these are intermittent, that it's difficult to quote-unquote "catch them in the act." And that's the problem I've been running into for years and years and years. And, I'll explain this a little bit later, get back to my notes. I have not yet filed written formal complaints, my reason being that since 2016, have not led to any firm resolutions on my part. I do not think that my video recordings that I've submitted are considered as evidence. These businesses have been compliant since the conditions were established two years ago, even though they're not completed. So now, they're gonna start testing the waters and seeing what they can get away with, and to find out whether or not this town is going to enforce the conditions with any kind of penalties, since they've not been penalized in the past. As of today, I will start writing complaints, and if you guys revise the complaint policy, hallelujah, because I would like to follow up on my complaints. I want to know, will my phone videos be accepted as proof of violation? Will the town protect me? Will the town, will the violations be prosecuted? And when can I get peace so I can enjoy my backyard? I look forward for the town's outreach. Thank you.
Thanks, Eva.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name is Paul Frank, and I'm a proud Deloro High School tennis dad. I'm here tonight to request that you add to the May 11th agenda funding for the Loomis Community Tennis Courts at Deloro High School. The six community tennis courts at Deloro are the only public tennis courts from Johnson Springview Park in Rockland all the way up to North Auburn. The public courts are a significant asset to the town, serving Loomis residents with a fun, healthy, lifelong sport. When tournaments and other events occur at these public courts, they also provide a source of revenue for the shops and restaurants in Loomis. According to tennis court professionals, public courts should be resurfaced every four to seven years. The Deloro Community Courts were last refurbished in 2018, and the condition of the courts reflect this. The significant cracks in the courts are becoming a hazard, a detriment to play, and honestly, an embarrassment when teams from other communities come here to play. The last time these community courts were refurbished, the town of Loomis generously contributed $50,000 from the reserve and general funds. Again, I'm requesting this item be added to the May 11th agenda for further discussion and funding from the town council. I'm happy to, in the meantime, work with staff to discuss some of the details, and if any of the council members would like to come out and see the cracks and see how the facilities are used. Again, these are public resources, these are community courts, and we look forward to continued support from the town. Tonight, with me are also some parents from the Boys and Girls Team, as well as Coach Tom Isaac, who along with his wife Jen Isaac are really kind of the core, the foundation for the tennis teams at Deloro High School and other high schools in the area. Thank you.
I just have a quick comment. I think our May schedule is really full. So is there a time limit on this? Like, does it need, is it, does it have to be done immediately? Like, if we were going to give money, would it have to be done within the next month?
Well, the work wouldn't be able to be started until we have the monies.
Okay, so, yeah, so I think May might be a little too early, but June, I think, is doable, yeah.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much.
And Coach Isaac.
I gotta tell you, it's a little intimidating speaking to you folks, because I talk to high school players and kids of smaller ages. And so I thought I would just give you a little flavor of what happens out there in those courts. Now, he told you about the people coming into the community, and, you know, how people, when they visit for schools, and this is just part of that package. And so if you saw this little seven-year-old boy, I got a phone call one day and said, my son has cerebral palsy, and he comes in, and he's got a club foot, and his arm's like this, and he's about this tall, and he said, you know, he wants to play tennis, there's no way he can play. And I said, oh, wow. I mean, mine's not near superior. Both fingers messed up here from a bush and accident. And that one, I got burned, so I understand people that have problems like that. And I said, you know what? I know exactly how to do it.
Can you talk to him in the microphone?
I know exactly how to do it. You put the ball in the end of your racket, because most tennis players, they throw it up like this, and then they hit it. But you're gonna have to put yours right here in the end, and throw it up in the air, and hit it with your racket. You see, he plays with his, your relative, yeah. He thinks he's a tennis player now.
He's a tennis player now, yeah.
Yeah, this is what happens on your tennis courts here in Loomis. Another phone call, this lady says, "You know, we were at the public court over in Lincoln and I called around all the clubs." She's seven years old also. And, and they said they didn't know how to teach her because she has one arm. And she has a little stub right here. And somebody at the park said, "Oh my gosh, you need to go see Coach Tom, he could probably fix that." So she comes over, she's sitting on the bench, and I walk over. And I got my head down because the mom said she's really nervous. And I went over and I said, "Oh, you probably don't want to be coached by me because I got fingers missing on this hand." And she puts her little stub up and she goes, "Look at this, Coach." So she puts her racket under her stub, throws the ball up with this hand and hits the ball. She thinks she's a tennis player. So this is the kind of stuff that goes on in your courts. There's about 75 to 100 people that show up out there every Saturday. There's people that, when their kids are here doing other things for other events, they come out to the tennis courts. Okay, so anyways, I just wanted to give you a flavor of what happens. This is what you pay through your taxes, my stipend, this is what you get. I have kids that have drug problems, suicidal kids. If you're one of those parents, you're gonna love me because I don't give up. So it's not just a matter of tennis out there. So, we really appreciate, Tim Mandurko, I think was the last mayor when I was up here giving a little talk a few years ago, and his son's on the team now. But there's some amazing things that happen out there. So, thank you for all your support. Man, I'll tell you, if you are a person who lives in this town, you got a business, you better up your ante. I'm listening to the librarian and the sheriff and all these people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Chris Wysocki, W-Y-S-O-C-K-I. And my daughter is a proud member of the Delora tennis team. And this is a community asset that we believe, as a family, that deserves to be kept up and taken care of. The courts are more than about Delora. It's about the surrounding league. It's around the 75 to 100 people that Coach Isaac mentioned show up every Saturday. You know, it's an important community investment. Loomis is a, you know, precious area and we believe that the tennis courts are an integral part of the community as a whole. So it's more than Delora High School students. But for those reasons, I really suggest and encourage this council to consider adding an approval for tennis resurfacing. Because it's, it's a shining star in the, in the area and we think it deserves to be taken care of. So, thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Morgan Zerwas. I also have kids who play tennis. I was not a tennis person, but if anyone meets the Isaacs and the program they're developing over there, it is addictive. And I've seen it with my own kids and I'm also a teacher at Delora. And so I oftentimes drive to school to pick something up in my classroom and I would highly advise any of you, just checking out. It's not uncommon in the evenings to find people who are not connected to the Delora High School program. High school age students, turning the, you know, it's a coin-operated lights. So they come, they turn the lights on and they're playing tennis out there. And it's really fun, as someone who's a part of the tennis program, to go out there and see youth who are not connected to the tennis program, playing tennis. I'm also really connected to the Loomis Basin Dolphins Swim Team, which is right next door to the tennis courts. And it is like the most fun thing for the, I mean, and that team is, you know, 300, 400 swimmers, which you can imagine how many people are coming to the meets. And the kids, they enjoy that it's a public tennis court. Kids bring their, bring tennis rackets, they bring pickleball rackets to swim meets to play on the courts. So I do want to just emphasize that it's not just the tennis program that enjoys the tennis courts. It is a community. I think the, the coin-operated lights really speak to that because high school age kids love to go out and play tennis at night. And as a teacher of kids who I teach at the continuation program at Delora, and it's a much better option for kids to be playing tennis at night than some of the things kids are choosing to do. So to have that available to them is really important. So, I'd also like to emphasize that we'd love for that to be added to the agenda.
Thank you. Before we move online, I just want to say that when we, if this comes back to the agenda, which it seems like it's going to, then make sure you all come through, yes.
Do we have to have a consensus?
Do we need a consensus to bring it back to the?
Yes, I think we do.
It would be helpful for direction from staff, if there's a, if there's a consensus to bring this back.
Seems like we're all, yep. Not May. That's gonna be too much. All right, now, anybody online?
Mayor, if you don't mind, can I just make one comment? I would definitely encourage you each to go out. I looked at the courts, I met with Coach the Isaacs and Jill Butler and I got the whole rundown, I saw the courts, I heard about the programs, I saw that all the kids on the courts excited. It's really, really worth you guys going out and seeing it for your own eyes, so.
All right, so with that, I'm going to close public comment. And now we're gonna move on to the consent calendar, because I still don't see Ed. "All items listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature and will be enacted by one motion unless an audience member or a council member requests otherwise." Does anybody have any, up here, have any comments on the consent calendar?
Wanna pull item four, please?
Okay, so we're gonna pull item four. Anything else, anybody?
No.
Okay, anybody in the public wanna pull any items from the consent agenda? Anybody online? Nope, okay. So then, I need a motion to approve items one through three on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve items one through three.
All right, do I have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion passes. Item four.
Thank you so much, Mayor. The reason I wanted to pull this item is, and it's Richard's engineering report. Thank you so much, Richard. I am curious to know what is going on with our, our planning paving index and, you know, and other items in terms of what other roadways we're maintaining and traffic mitigation and whatnot. And just kind of wanted to touch base with you, Richard, on, on that. Thank you.
Thanks for the question. So, for the pavement condition index and assessment, we have the consultant chosen. We just need to award the consultant contract next meeting. The timeframe for completion for that study is gonna be in September. So, what the pavement condition index allows us to do is long-range planning for which roads to rehab with the limited funds we have. So, for rehabbing roads, deterioration is based on a logarithmic curve. So we try to catch it before it hits extreme. But sometimes we have to let certain areas fail because we don't have the funding to address the issue. So we have to come up with a plan. And with this pavement condition index, we can come up with a plan for the next five years. So, you should have this done every five years. Ours expired this year. And with, without this assessment done, we won't be eligible for state and federal funding, so.
And that'll be looking at all of our roads that we are responsible for, correct?
Correct, every single road. I think we own 34.8 center lane miles, so, from the center line, so. And in terms of other roadway improvements, so just an update, reiterating the Taylor Road corridor study, we applied for the Caltrans Planning Grant in January. We're waiting to hear back in the next couple of weeks if we receive the grant. And with that verdict, we're gonna apply for the Safe Streets for All Grant. The reason for this is if we don't receive the Calgens Planning Grant, then we aren't as competitive for the Safe Streets for All. So, that's for that, for that Taylor Road corridor study, it's gonna analyze Taylor Road as a whole and make sure we have the improvements for pedestrians, for vehicle or traffic, to make sure it's more efficient. And it allows us to program projects in the future. Some coordination we have, we are currently actively doing, is with Rockland. So, the traffic signals on Rockland's side and Caltrans' side to the I-80 on-ramp, they're not timed correctly with the Loomis signals. So, we're actively working with Caltrans and Rockland to get our signals timed correctly so it's more efficient for everyone, so. So, so far for pavement rehab, we've completed one pavement project, which was Del Mar and Bankhead Rehab Project, that's been completed. We noticed of completion last council meeting. The last pavement project that we have for this year is for Brace Road from Sierra College to Stone Road. So that's gonna be full-depth reclamation. So, that's also funded by the state and we're waiting Caltrans' approval. And once that happens, we can go out to bid. So, hopefully we can start that project in the summer. But that wraps up our '24, '25 pavement projects. So, we have another pavement project for '25, '26. In terms of traffic mitigation, like discussed previously, we have an issue with Taylor Road and Oak, Oak Drive, Oak Street. So, we're working with its hardware owner and implementing traffic mitigation measures. We're putting up delineators to hopefully slow down traffic, make them feel constricted so they're more aware of pedestrians. So, we're hopefully gonna implement that in the next couple of weeks, so. But, yeah, that's all I have.
Thank you so much, that's excellent. Thank you.
I think we need to do public comment on this. Does anybody have any public comment on the engineer's report? Anybody? Nobody online, okay. Am I, do I see that there's nobody attending on Zoom? Is that what, is that accurate?
That's wild.
All right, well then, I need a motion to approve item number four on the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve item number four on the consent agenda.
I second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, that passes. Still waiting on Ed. Okay. Oh. Okay, he's got time. Let's do, move on to the presentation. Our first order of business is a presentation on mental health awareness around your device usage. Do you want to preface this, Wes, at all?
I can, Mr. Mayor. I know that you reached out and you had some very interesting facts that you'd learned from children not doing social media thing for a while and all that stuff. So I know council was eager to hear kind of what your findings were and, you know, is it kind of a community benefit to be back?
Yes, thank you so much. Good evening, and I want to thank you all for having me here today. Jan, thank you so much for inviting me, it's good to see you again. My name is Jennifer Christensen and I am the Director of Fundraising for the Golden Eagle Softball Association. But I'm also a Delora graduate, I grew up in Loomis. And I'm the mother of a 15-year-old softball player, as well as a seven-year-old second grader at Loomis Basin Charter School. I'm here tonight to discuss a very important topic, what I feel to be a mental health crisis, especially with regard to our youth today. But I'm also here to happily report that your Delora softball girls made history on a global level by being the very first in the world to do exactly what they did. And one of the players is the very first ever in the world as well have her brain, spect brain scanned for purposes of medical awareness and information about social media and the detriments they have. So we'll get to that in a minute. But, basically, we need some, just a little bit of brief info and background information. We obviously know that smartphones and social media use is bad, right? Part of our project was, we wanted to delve in and just see just how bad. We know statistically speaking, and unfortunately, the highest, Placer County has the highest teenage suicide rate out of any other county in the state of California. And if we speak on a national level, it's reported that one out of every two high schoolers has thought about suicide, like themselves, which is terrifying. Mental health numbers are through the roof across the board, as far as depression and anxiety goes. They've been at an all-time high now for the last handful of years and are showing no signs of stopping. And this particular generation, the teenagers we see now, these are the ones that they don't really know where they're gonna end up. It's the first kind of generation where it's been immersed in who they are, it's part of their identity. And so we don't know the long-term effects quite yet. So let's get kind of down to it and to the project. I was sitting at home one night trying to figure out how we could get lights installed on the varsity softball field at Delora because the JV program is the, I think it's the only longstanding core sport at Delora whose JV still has to be transported off-site for practices and games. So I'm like, well, let's get lights on the field. So I'm sitting there thinking, man, this would be a lot of car washes to have to raise that amount of money. Simultaneously, I'm yelling at my daughter Addison, I'm like, "Get off your phone," again. You know, my daily battle, and the light bulb went on. What if we did a project that was twofold? What if we had a mental health awareness component and then we asked the community to support that via donating towards the cost of their lights? And so, the slogan we came up with is "Look up, looking up to light up, giving up blue lights for field lights." And it became the Look Up Campaign. And what it would be is, and what it was, is all 27 softball players, so that's 100% participation, gave up their smartphones and all social media use for 30 days. It was very impressive. And I fundraised prior to several thousand dollars so we could provide flip phones as well as data plans for all of these girls and GPS tags in case, for the drivers, in case their parents wanted them as well. So they were given a flip phone with call-only, minimal text. And it's like the old school where it takes forever anyway, so it was, you know, it was not fun for them and they had no apps. They were downright awful to be around the first week, I'm not gonna lie. I really wanted my daughter to like meet the Delora admin and I was like, "Let's wait." So, what we did is I partnered with the San Francisco Giants Mental Health Team and they actually came to Delora and we put on a guest speaker night on January 31st. We called it "Look Up for Mental Health." Next slide, please. And we had Dr. Shayna Alexander, she's actually also a Delora grad and a dear friend of mine. She is the Doctor of Mental Health and Wellness for the San Francisco Giants. We had Drew Robinson in attendance, he's a mental health advocate, former MLB professional. Amy G, she's a published journalist, she's big time and amazing. And then of course, Dee Logan Webb, starting pitcher for the San Francisco Giants in attendance. We also had the Placer County Sheriff Opioid Crisis Team there as well and that was wonderful, I was so grateful. We had a packed house, we had auction items that were one of a kind. It was such a cool event. And what was even more awesome is, it was a ticketed event and so all proceeds went towards our girls. And then I got a phone call, I think it was two days before, from the owner of all the local Dutch brothers. Her name's Heather, I'm gonna butcher her name, Manuel, I apologize if that's wrong. She called and said, "I have to be a part of this, I will match whatever you raise at this fundraiser to the tune of $20,000." And so, we raised almost $29,000 and she rounded up and she wrote us a check for $20,000. So, we raised almost, you know, $40,000 with that one event, which was super amazing. The community loved it so much, they asked me if we would repeat it every year. So I told them to give me a week to sleep first and then, and then yes, the answer will be yes. So here we are on January 31st, all 27, like I said, all of them did it. And if you go to the next slide, please, this is a video of them actually putting it in a "Look Up to Light Up" box we had there. Some of them looked like they were gonna cry, others were smiling. But from my perspective right there, that was super impactful, I almost cried. That, just to see that many teenage girls, and I mean, they were throwing it in there with conviction. That was really cool. So, next slide, please. And this is them with Logan Webb afterwards. A bunch of the media was there, Channel 3, Fox 40, we had Gold Country Media there as well. They were all over, I got interviewed on the radio, we were all over the place for that week, which was really neat. Next slide, please. Okay, part of this project was, I reached out to Dr. Daniel Amen himself of the Amen Clinics, as well as his incredible wife, Tana Amen. And they were generous enough to not only take my call, but to have a meeting and work with me throughout the entire process. And my initial goal to reaching out was, I wanted to see what research they had done with regard to this topic. And I was blown away when they said they didn't, they didn't have any. And I was like, whoa, how, how do you not have research yet on, on this topic? I was just kind of blown away and they're like, "Well, our, the way we operate here at the Amen Clinics is part of our, the way we treat people or develop treatment is through spect scanning, so spect brain scanning." And we've never had a teenager offer And we've never had a teenager offer or volunteer to do it, and we can't pursue them because they're underage. So once my daughter found out about this, once I told her, guess who was the first to volunteer? And so this, she's gonna kill me. But this is a picture of my beautiful daughter Addison, and so she volunteered to be the first. So part of this is three weeks leading up to her very first scan, I lifted, it was really hard to do, by the way, I lifted all the restrictions on her smartphone. I wanted to see what would happen. And I just said, okay, just live your life. And I continued to monitor her usage, and it went through the roof. We're talking, now, she's a straight A honors AP student and a softball player, so she doesn't have a lot of free time. Forty-two hour average on social media alone for the week. Every week for three weeks. It blew my mind. I was like, are you staying up all night? It just didn't make sense. So we went there, we got her scanned, and then, next slide, please. Okay, perfect. So yes, spect brain scanning, single photon emission computed tomography. So what it does is MRIs are like signals and anatomical. Spect brain scanning evaluates blood flow and activity of the brain. And we'll get to what they look like in a minute. But basically, it monitors healthy activity, too little and too much. And then the clinicians take what they see and try and balance the brain, calming it down if it's working too hard, or stimulating certain parts if it's not working enough. Next slide, please. Okay. And then, in addition to having her brain scanned, she went through a series of tests. They test you on the computer for about, it's about twenty to thirty minutes worth of testing. Her emotions, her cognition, memory retention, behavior is everything. And then she'll do, she did it on the backend as well. So what we also did on the backend is, once all the girls were done with the thirty days, we had all of them and their parents fill out assessments and observations. So it was a very lengthy questionnaire that I developed myself. And then we're gonna take a look at some of the results. This is not all of them, but this is some of them. So before the detox, I had the following social media accounts. Yeah, Snapchat, Instagram, and TikTok, those are for sure the most popular without a doubt. Snapchat, it turns out, and unfortunately, is our children's means of text messaging now. They've completely eradicated text messaging, and they rely completely, like solely, on communicating via Snapchat, which turns out to be the absolute scariest one. Because they drop off after twenty-four hours, the photos, the messaging, it's the number-one hotspot for sex traffickers, for sex predators, for drug, you know, drug use, fentanyl, all of that stuff. It is scary. It is a scary place. So that's part of what I'm pushing for is, we need, gotta find another way. And it's gonna take all of us to come up with a way. Next slide, please. So the top one on the next, the graphs we're about to look at, the top one is the girls' answers, and the bottom are the parents'. So before the detox, they spent on average three hours or more on social media daily in total. We're just gonna take a look at the green for now. Almost always, forty percent, the kids, and I'm gonna tell you right now, that's not even that truthful. They're, they're not being totally honest. So, but that's still a very high number. Because statistically speaking, they say four hours or more increases their likelihood of ongoing and persistent depression and anxiety by like a third. So next slide, please. Before the detox started, I had feelings of anxiousness throughout the day. Let's focus on the sometimes or and often. That scares me too, because teenagers, I don't think they fully know what I mean by that. And so the fact that fifty percent of them are reporting what they perceive as anxiety tells me that there's actually far more. And then you can see that reflective in what their parents reported. Over seventy percent, that's daily. That, that really makes me uneasy as a mom. Next slide, please. And before the detox started, I was feeling down or depressed throughout the day. Again, let's go to sometimes. That's too much, in my opinion, as well. And next slide, please. Before the detox started, I could easily go up to two hours without picking up, looking at, or checking my smartphone. This does not include when at school. And I definitely know they were fibbing here. So almost always, twenty-five percent. Sometimes, I think mom and dad were being generous as well, because I, all I see between class and sports is this. Next slide, please. And then when friends, this next question, you know, when they're hanging out, yes, they're on it all the time together, taking selfies and posting, tagging each other. And the unfortunate thing about that is, there's GPS, so everyone can see where everyone is, all of the people that follow them, unless they have it turned off. And so other than the obvious scary issues there, it's a thing of being left out. Causes all these strains on interpersonal relationships, the bullying starts. And that's, that's a huge issue as well. The bullying that happens on a social media is so profound. There's all these intricate ways that they bully each other, pinning, unpinning, following. It's just, it's crazy. And it's such an age, impressionable age where their entire identity is dependent on what their peers think of them and how they view them. It's no wonder our teens are struggling so much. Next slide, please. We don't have to read through all these, but these are the girls' answers. What did the first twenty-four hours after giving up your phone feel like? Basically, yeah, you can actually see someone said they were sick. It was horrible. All I wanted to do was just go on my phone. I hated it. I felt left out, lonely. I was an anxious mess. I was very bored. We had a lot of reports of boredom, which turns out is actually a symptom of withdrawals. Next slide, please. Which brings me to, the first week, I experienced the following. And I, I do know some of these are probably a little lower than what we actually saw, because for those of us who are around them all the time, which we were around them constantly, by the way, part of this thirty days was we, we had two community fundraising projects per week and throughout the entire thirty days, so we actually ended up doing ten. And so the goal of that was to get them out in the community and interacting with everyone on a community level, and to keep them busy and to help fundraise. So we did softball clinics, bake sales, fill the helmets. We did, we tried to do yard work for the elderly, but it didn't work out, but we had them going. So to think that they were a hundred percent reported boredom, I'm like, when? You know, it was school Monday through Friday. They had practices afterwards, and then on weekends, they were mine. So I'm like, when were you bored? But it's just interesting to hear that that's their perception of it, because they're so used to this. Next slide, please. What changes did you notice? You know, more smiley overall, enjoyed being with my family more, better sleep schedule, more productive, started to see better relationships with my friends, easier to focus on one thing at a time. I can tell you right now, my daughter became a completely different person for the better. It was the most incredible thing I've ever seen. She asked her brother to go swing on the swing set. She was engaging with my parents. Everybody said she got taller too, and we finally realized it was her posture. She's no longer, longer shaped like a C, you know? And everybody's like, she got taller. I'm like, oh no, she's just standing up straight. Next slide, please. During the last week or two of the detox, were you spending more time with your family than before? And how cool is that, by the way, that number? Because we actually know statistically that that in and of itself made everything worth it. Because the close, the closer they are to their family and siblings, the better for their mental overall health. Yep. Next slide, please. Thank you. During the last week or two, oh, this was really cool. We had so many girls just start to forget about their phones entirely. Be like, they wouldn't call it a phone either. They'd just call it their flippy. And they were just leaving at home. So the last two weeks, these girls were just running about without any device whatsoever. How cool is that? That was one of my favorite parts. Next slide, please. During the last week, were you sleeping better than before? Overall, yes, very much. Next slide, please. During the last week, did you feel a little more calm and or content? I mean, that's pretty profound to me as well. That's huge. Were you finding it easier to focus? Not sure why the no's there, but again, if you look at the parents who are really, you know, observing what's going on, that's pretty reflective of what I saw as well. And next slide, thank you. What's one thing, this is really cool too. What's one thing you noticed about your non-softball peers who still had their smartphones? Everyone started to refer to them as they, like they were this weird party that was separate from them at the end. They are on it a lot. They knew what we were doing. A lot of them said they could never give up their phones for a month. And when I was with other people, I could really see how much they were on their phones. They never looked up. They were always on their phones. I love this one. They are always on their phones, literally always. The things they talk about are only related to what's going through, what's going on through their phones and social media, and it's scary how toxic and irrelevant it is. There's so much drama always. All they do is talk bad about other people and spread rumors. It's bad. And then the last one, they seemed addicted. Next slide, please. Oh, we can actually, we can pass that one. Thank you so much. Okay, so here's the spect brain scan results. We don't have too much longer, I apologize. I actually cut out half of this presentation, if you can believe it. So this is the superficial one of her very first scan. Again, colors are irrelevant, smooth as best. So we kind of deduced that the bumpiness might have been too much sugar. She's definitely a sugar addict. And then, next slide, please. Okay, so this is the, you know, the very, the meat of the scans. Blue is average activity, blood flow, red above average, and white is high. The doctor's notes says that we should see the majority of increased or hyperactivity in the cerebellum where half of the brain's neurons are located. So that just means fancy way of saying, the back of the brain should be the most lit on average for any, anyone in the world. And she already started this with above-average red and white activity overall. And the next slide. And this is her second scan. If you notice, that it's a little smoother, especially, especially on the temporal region of her brain. And then the next scan as well. Here's where it's very profound. Okay, so we have a massive increase of neuronal activity on her brain, especially the prefrontal cortex, which is responsible for anything cognitive and emotional. So her memory, retention, everything, and if you, we'll get to her scores in a minute. All those tests she took too, the cognition ones will blow your mind. In a five-week period, this kid's scores went through the roof. And if you look at the districts like math scores, so math is listed as top five, one of the, one of the subjects in school that requires the most retention. And sadly, as a nation right now, we are on average a eight-second attention span. Now, that's not, you know, there's exceptions, but that's just the average when we're going down. So to see this change is, it's everything to me. I feel like it's rooted in, you know, lower or decreased state scores, testing, everything. Our kids not being able to pay attention, not being able to read a chapter in their textbooks and get all the way through it. All of it is connected. Let's see here. Okay. I do want to make note, though, from a diagnostician standpoint, this isn't great. They said, we would love to see, we would love to see where she's at in three to six months, because we would like it to calm down. But basically, what you're seeing is, within five weeks, we've got a massive influx of neuronal activity. So ideally, she needed to get used to it. Everything's firing for the first time that wasn't before. Get used to it, likely would have settled down. But we don't know. There's still a lot of work and research to be done. Next slide, please. Okay, here's her scores really quick. So this, I just included the cognition scores. Her first scan, memory, she was in the forty-second percentile. The same, the same test the next time was ninetieth percentile. Focus was the first time sixty-ninth, the next time was seventy-ninth. Planning was eighty-seventh at first, and then seventy-seventh. And the doctor's note here was that, this is interesting, but he thinks because she opened her neurological space more and was more aware of different areas and means of getting there, planning-wise, instead of just hyper-focused right here. He said, I'd be interested to see where that would be at in about six months from now. And then this is really cool. Processing speed, ninety-seventh percentile, ninety-sixth percentile in the second, but he said if it's within one percentile, they consider it unchanged. But he did say that he's never seen, this is really cool, just for me as a mom. It's like, I've never actually seen this this high. That means she's ninety-seven, she's higher than ninety-seven percent of the nation in processing speed, which made her feel good. But the flexibility, she was quite low. So her ability to, you know, adjust, to change as it comes, was not good. She was eighth and then went up to fifteenth percentile. And her recall memory was sixty-one percent, and then it went up to eightieth percent. So imagine what we would see after six months of being off of this. Next slide, please. Would you recommend other teenagers try this thirty-day digital detox? Eighty percent of them said yes, and ninety-four point one of the parents said yes. We actually had other teams, super interested, come over after games, asking to see their flippies. I've had collegiate athletes message me and just say, this is the coolest thing ever. If I, I'm gonna start doing this before playoffs. So it's, it's really interesting to get everybody else's thoughts and opinions on this. Next slide, please. And I think that's it. So what, what's my goal? Why am I here? Why am I trying to spread all this awareness? Is, we, we need to see a change. What I didn't advertise that much, but it definitely deserves some attention, is my son, who's seven, he chose to give up his gaming device for thirty days to support his sister, and the changes we saw there were absolutely insane. And that's not social media. That's just a gaming device. In short, on, we were, we thought, we were meeting with his teacher. We thought he had ADHD. We were this close to getting like a tutor, getting him some help with the school psychologist, everything. On day nineteen, without his gaming device, teacher walked up to my car pickup and was like, what has, what has happened? I'm like, what do you mean? She goes, all of a sudden, he's just through the roof. Like, I don't know what it is. I'm like, okay, maybe it's a fluke. Nope, still going. His scores, his state scores, everything has gone through the roof. She's having to supplement him with extra work now, because he, she can't keep up. She said, he's always been exceptionally bright, but now he's just that much brighter. So that's really cool too. But I just, we need to make a change. And my hope is that the schools are going to hear me out as well. I do plan on presenting before the Loomis Union School District, as well as the Placer Unified School District. And I'm hoping that parents will be on board as well, because my recommendation would be no smartphones at all for K through eighth. They don't need a smartphone at that age. Maybe a flip phone or those newer ones that look like it, but aren't technically smartphones. And then wait until at least sixteen, if you can, for social media. But if you can't, transparency with your parents. Parents, don't be afraid. Hand me that thing whenever you want. You have all of their passwords and usernames, and you can check it at any time. And it just, it's scary, a lot of the things we found that I will save for another day. But I want to thank you so much for hearing me out today. I really appreciate it.
Thanks for doing that. I was, the fact that nobody had done a study on this before is mind-boggling to me, because it's been, we've all known it's been a problem for so long. How could nobody have looked at it?
Well, they've done studies, and they've done MRIs, but they've never done a spect brain scan before and after a detox. And of course, people, a lot of people everywhere have done thirty-day digital detoxes, but nowhere has a full athletic team of teenagers done it, and to the capacity that they did.
It would be interesting, I mean, as, did you say you're their coach?
No, I'm the Director of Fundraising for the Booster Club.
Maybe if they're, if they, because they were mentally quicker, I wonder if that improved their playing skills at all.
So they've, both teams, varsity and JV right now, I think are sixteen and one and fifteen and one. And varsity's ranked third in the state and top twenty in the nation right now. And a couple of the girls were just interviewed, and they, they maintain that this, the reason they're doing so well is, this was part of it, for sure. It brought them closer, they bonded, and they're just thriving, whether they want to admit it or not, because they were mad at me. I was not their favorite person in the world for a very long time.
I have a question. So just to confirm, they were able to use their cellphone for calls and text? That's it, right?
The flip phone that we provided. We actually locked all of their smartphones in the on-campus safe.
There's a reason why I'm asking that. So I'm one of those old-school people that doesn't actually use social media a lot. So I'm just curious, because I could probably do that. I'm not, I'm not like trying to, you know, bet you guys. Let's do something. But I'm just saying, like, I'm very dinosaur.
I cannot do that.
That's amazing. It's really hard, you know? It's so integrated in our society. I mean, even the schools, some of the sports programs announce their tryouts on social media. I mean, even the schools, some of the sports programs announce their tryouts on social media apps. So I'm hoping they'll work with me on that and change that.
My wife, she's gonna kill me for saying this. Three days ago, she says, I'm done with Instagram, not gonna look at anymore Facebook. And then the next day, she was like, I'm looking at it. And I was like, didn't we just have this coming? And she was the, I wasn't, I wasn't pushing it at all. She's just, like, she just can't get rid of it.
No, it's, it's incredibly addictive.
Really have to delete it and then just, it's, it's an effort.
Yeah, it's really hard, really hard.
Sad thing is, we had a life without cellphones.
I know. Well, and that was the thing too, right? We, I feel like we kind of gave them this gift, this experience. I mean, how many of us are guilty of saying, you know, when I was young, we didn't have that, or we had this, or we did this? And so they hear it all the time, and it was like, well, here you go. You're gonna walk a little bit in our shoes. Um, all of them say that it was very mind, my, like, it really opened their minds. They learned a lot.
Thank you so much. Um, it's just incredibly fascinating, and what an incredible project to put forward in our town. Um, you know, and I feel like, you know, maybe this is a start for some, you know, greater good.
Yes.
Um, and I appreciate you coming and, and explaining what happened, and you should all be commended for what you did.
Oh, thank you so much. I appreciate it. That's my hope, too. We'll start with Loomis, and then we'll hope everybody will.
Loomis, then the world.
Exactly, yeah.
Say thank you to your daughter also.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Said, say thank you to your daughter also for, I know she was voluntold, but still.
No, I mean,
But still.
Not really, actually. Uh, in fact, I was really worried, you know, I'm like, it's a scan, oh my gosh, radiation. But we looked it up and researched it, but I made her do a pros and cons list, so she was fully aware. And I'm like, it's like taking a flight to the East Coast. How do you feel about that, as far as radiation goes? And, you know, and also, how do you feel about your medical information being out there? You know, and what capacity are you comfortable sharing? And this is what it means. She's like, oh, I wanna do it. Just let me do it. Okay, wow. So, I know. I'm very proud of her, very proud of her.
All right, uh, I need to, yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry that was so long. Thank you all.
I just, I'll, I just want to make one comment, because you talked about, um, the high number of suicides in Placer County.
Yeah.
So my boys graduated from Delro many years ago, but I will say that there has been a tr- I mean, even one is too many, but there has been an enormous amount, a tragic amount of suicides, and even accidental deaths, like, um, car accidents. And like even right here on Taylor Road, they, when my son was, two people that I can remember, probably many more, just in his very short period of time there. It was, it is really an issue at Delro, and so I don't know what that stigma is, but I think that this is, goes a long way to kind of mitigate that. But to, one of the comments that I had kind of made to her when you were talking about the, the, um, amount of family time that came out of that, um, I believe that in any, in any case, the more you can get your children to bond and to spend time face-to-face with parents and their, their siblings, a lot of that anxiety and isolation and depression will dissipate when you have those face-to-face, and not every single time, but like you saw.
Yep, absolutely.
You proved it. So I, I think that that is incredible, that you brought that awareness to the girls, so that maybe they can, um, see the value in making sure that they spend time with their families.
Yeah, absolutely. I hope so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Appreciate you.
Don't go anywhere, just in case anybody has any questions for you. So, uh, does anybody have any public comment? They would like to, no? All right, anybody, nobody on Zoom? Okay, closed public comment. Thank you again. All right, and now we're gonna jump back in the agenda. We have a recognition and proclamation for Ed Heidig, who has graced us. And I, I've asked Councilmember Cortez to take care of this for me.
First, I want to say thank you, Mayor Ring, for allowing me to do this. I really appreciate it. Um, before I read your proclamation, I just really want to say that from the moment that you became on board and you became the senior, um, field rep for Kevin Kylie, you got engaged. You knew everybody. Um, you really made such an effort to be at, I mean, every time I turned around, there you were, things that I didn't even think that you would be at. But you really took, um, real interest and care. And, um, I just really appreciate all of your community outreach and all of the things that you did to be a, a member of this community. So it's my pleasure to be able to, to give this to you today. So, a proclamation of the Town of Loomis, or I'm sorry, proclamation of the Town Council of the Town of Loomis honoring Edward G. Heidig. Whereas, Mr. Heidig is a lawyer who has served in a variety of leadership posts in the health and public policy field and established a special interest in rural health challenges. And whereas, he served as a legislative assistant to Senator Pete Wilson. And during hi- this tenure, he positioned Senator Wilson's leadership role in advocating significant reform in the reauthorization of the Clean Air Act of nineteen ninety. And whereas, as the Director of the Department of Conservation, State of California, from nineteen ninety-one to nineteen ninety-four, Ed balanced environmental regulation in oil, gas, and mining industries. And he reached out to rural stakeholders, especially small businesses. And whereas, as the Deputy Legislative Secretary at the Business, Transportation, and Housing Agency for the State of California from nineteen ninety-six to nineteen ninety-eight. Ed excelled as a coalition builder and vote counter by successfully managing controversial, controversial legislation through the legislature, such as contracting out assembly-only, smoke a joint, lose your license, and healthcare bills. And whereas, serve, while serving as Director of the Office of Administrative Law for the State of California in nineteen ninety-eight, he re, he directed a successful RFP bid that secured a one-million-dollar contract royalty increase annually, while putting the California Code of California regulations online free of charge. And whereas, Ed served as a General Counsel for the, um, Diocese of Sacramento from nineteen ninety-nine to two thousand and four. And during this time, he successfully managed mega-tort sexual abuse litigation, as well as an extensive caseload of probate, land use, and employment. Ed counseled the Sacramento Diocese Catholic Charities for twenty counties in Northern California. And whereas, from two thousand eighteen to two thousand twenty-one, Ed served as the Regional Director, Department of Health and Human Services, appointed by the Secretary Alex Azar. In this, in his time of service, uh, with this agency, he organized Rural Health Stakeholder Roundtables on behalf of Deputy, uh, Secretary Eric Hargan to address special rural health issues in Nevada and Arizona. And whereas, from January thirteenth, twenty twenty-three, to, um, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-five, Ed has served as a Senior Field Representative for the Office of Kevin Kylie. While he has been an invaluable resource for the community as a whole, he has been great, he has been a great asset to the Town of Loomis and a friend to all. The Town of Loomis rec, congratulates Ed on a job well done. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Town Council of the Town of Loomis hereby recognizes and honors Edward Heidig upon occasion of his retirement. So we just want to give this to you. Yes, thank you so much. Thank you so much, so much. Did you want to get a picture with the, um,
I would.
We would like to.
Do you want to do it now, or do you want to?
Do you want to do it? Well, let me just play for now. Do you want to do this right now? Did you want to say anything?
Yeah, well, there's so much to say. Uh, I, uh, obviously can't keep a job. And, uh, but it was a privilege, uh, to, uh, work for Kevin Kylie. And I, I enjoyed it very much, and I appreciate the trust and confidence he placed in me. And it was so easy working with the Town of Loomis and the staff of the Town of Loomis and the, the leadership and the, and the, your citizenry, uh, they were, they extended their heart and their hand to me to help me, uh, be a liaison, a conduit, uh, to Kevin. I would like to just say parenthetically, and lastly, that, uh, Chalise Horvath, who hired me, is still, is the district director. She does a champion job as that. And, uh, so, a- and Jack Thompson will be replacing me. And I can only think that your response time will increase. Uh, I was only responsive as much as I could be, because I was afraid I was gonna forget something. And, uh, but Jack is much younger, so he can probably, uh, keep a lot more balls in the air. Thank you very much, Amanda, or Councilwoman Cortez, for this. I appreciate it. And all the, all the, all the council members.
Thank you. I, I, we didn't spend a lot of time together, but you were always at these events. And it's, seeing you there, I mean, it just, it made me realize, you know, that Kevin was, was always available for us. And, and, and I just appreciate everything that you, that you did for him and for us.
Thanks for saying that, Mayor. And I want to thank my wife, Beth, who, uh, allowed me to work late in the evening and, uh, the next morning, uh, allowed me to go off to coffee. And we enjoyed, uh, to, uh, being together, and, uh, so it was, uh, hard for both of us. But, uh, she was always very cheerful and, uh, and, um, and, uh, supportive of the career. So thank you very much. Beth.
Does anybody else? Stephanie, what? Did you want to say something?
Well, I don't like saying goodbyes, and I know you're gonna be around. We've already talked about that. Um, but I just want to say that I think, um, we had the most outreach, um, under, and I'm going to say this, your leadership, um, working for Kevin. Um, you came to the Costco opening, you came to the Public Safety Day. You made sure Kevin was here for the Public Safety Day, which was huge, because everybody who was here that day, I don't want to say freaked out, but they freaked out in a cool way that we actually had a congressman here, and he was so excited. And, um, and then you made him sit in the helicopter, which was huge, too, and that helicopter meant everything to the Public Safety Day. Um, and then all the other times, and then, um, you know, um, even, uh, addressing our concerns when the power was out last year. I mean, a lot of people didn't know that, but your office was heavily involved in making sure that, um, helping us to get kind of our bearings back, so. Um, and thank you for being a support to me as mayor, um, last year. Um, I, you know, I mean, I can tell you all that offline, but, um, I, I also want to apologize. I'm glad that Amanda, uh, got, you know, gung-ho about this, and that was great. But I, I didn't actually know that the, that the city of Rockland was even, um, doing anything. And I didn't, I didn't even know about this until literally yesterday. So I, as, um, you know, a coworker of hers and a friend, I consider myself a friend of yours. I just want to apologize to you and say that I'm sorry that I wasn't even at least, uh, uh, kind of part of that, because I feel like I do owe you a lot of thanks um, for everything that you've done for the Town of Loomis in the last two, two and a half years, so. Um, you've been amazing, and we're really gonna miss you. And, um, you said, you mentioned Jack is gonna be, uh, quicker, but, um, I mean, I think he's gonna be awesome, but you are a staple in this, this town. Um, and I don't think that, I mean, he's got tough shoes to fill, let's just say that. So, and thank you, Amanda, for doing, for doing the proclamation. That was beautiful and lovely, and you got every point about what he's done in his past, so that was awesome. So, I'm gonna shut up now, but, um, I just wanted to say, um, I apologize. And also, awesome, and, um, we're really gonna miss you.
All right, do you guys want to do a photo? Let's do quick.
Oh, sorry, Amanda.
And I do want to thank Ed's wife for volunteering him, allowing him to, to attend all these things, so.
For sharing him with us.
That's right. It's, it's, it's tough on our families, just being, so I think it's, it's important to recognize that as well. Um, okay, I think that gets us to council committee reports. Go ahead.
I will. Um, um, as the St. Cog representative, I have been, um, going to downtown Sacramento. I always tell them when I get there, I hooked my, my horse and wagon and came down to the big city. Um, but anyway, getting, um, getting all back involved with that has been really wonderful. Um, looking forward to our first PCWA ad hoc committee meeting with council, with Danny, um, which is gonna be next week, and that's my report.
Um, so, uh, PCTPA is trying to expand their Placer Rides program. Um, we had, you know, we bought the seniors first, um, program that they're, that they're trying to implement also, um, with the, uh, mileage reimbursement. Um, they, they, they presented last time, um, but that's pretty much it, except for, did you want to talk about the, the other part of the safety committee, what?
Oh, you mean for Cal Cities? Whichever you want to do. But I was talking about the, the hydrants. You, you usually like to cover the. But, you know, um, that was actually kind of, um, as a partnership, that was actually kind of your deal. I'm not, I mean, I can't take credit for that, because you reached out to PCWA and you got, I mean, that was a really cool speech. So you could talk about that, and I could talk about, um, um, our tour and stuff like that. Why don't you, you bring that up, because you were actually the one that got the guy to come speak.
Well, well, we were just talking after we had the whole, you know, the conversation about what happened with the Palisades and all of those things. We actually were having a discussion, I think, I know Danny and I had talked about it here. And, um, we had decided, we were like, we really need to figure out who this, who does those things, right? Like, who maintains the, the fire hydrants? Who tests them? Who, you know, all of those things, make sure that there's water in it. So we talked to Wes, and I asked him, I did, I got some contacts for PCWA, which I figured out who to go to, and then we did bring them to, um, our safety committee, because we wanted to make sure. And the interesting thing is that there needed to be some contract updates, and so it was a really good opportunity that we, um, did dig into that. So, um, so that was that portion of it, but it, it was a collaborative effort. So I'm really grateful for everybody who, um, who participated in making all of that happen. And then Chief Duer, I feel so bad, because, um, when I brought that up, I didn't realize how much work I was creating for him. But it was, it was necessary, but, you know, timing is everything. So again, sorry, Chief.
Um, I mean, we can go in order, and I, but I will, I will add on to that, um, the fire hydrants. So I even learned a lot from that, um, more than I ever thought, um, that existed. But I don't know if you guys know this, the, they have little arrows that go whichever way the fire hydrant's out there. So in the future, if there's a fire, and you're looking for the fire hydrant, there's these little, uh, blue, you think they're, I think we call them idiot bumps. They're not actually idiot bumps. It's, it's pointing to where the fire hydrant is. So next time you're looking for a fire hydrant, you see that blue thing, look in the direction. It's like an arrow. So there you go.
A blue refel, a blue reflector on the road.
Yeah, but we call them idiot bumps in the country, right? You go over, you know that you're in the wrong side of the lane. No, that's actually for a fire hydrant, so.
Uh, I'll go. So, um, with Pioneer, um, we've been talking about adding programs to the, to Pioneer. And I believe we have somebody coming sometime in the future to discuss Pioneer's programs for, at a council meeting. Um, I was, uh, just yesterday, appointed to, as Chair of the Finance Committee, which was a surprise to me. But, um, it puts me also on the newly-formed Governance Committee, which is great, I think, for the town, because.
For Cal Cities?
No, 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 for the, for Pioneer.
Oh, Pioneer. Oh, okay.
But it gets us a voice on, because that was the issue that we had when Pioneer was up, upgrading, updating their GPA last time, was, was the governance of it. And so this gets me on there. I don't know how happy they are about that, but that's, I'm on it now, so they have to deal with it for a year. Um, with the schools, uh, they, their, their transitional kindergarten enrollment, um, went way up this year. So our schools at the lowest levels are getting, there, 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 there's a huge increase in enrollment. Um, they had to add two to three more classrooms. They called them the COVID babies. And so they're the ones that are coming out now. That's what they, that's what they called them at the meeting. Uh, so, because there, everybody was stuck at home for.
They had nothing else to do, girl. They made babies.
Uh, and, uh, there was two, two, uh, districts, Loomis Union School District School, recognized by the State of California for their academic performance this last year, and so I think that's exceptional. Uh, we, we knew our schools were good, and now we have the, the, the documents to prove it. Um, I talked about the League of Cities, um, uh, Assembly Bill that we were talking about. Um, and then lastly, I had my meet-the-mayor meeting this past Saturday. Um, it went great. Um, I have my next one is May tenth, ten to noon at the library. Everybody is welcome to tend. Um, you don't have to have a question. You can just listen to, to us talk about what's, what's happening in the town, what people, what issues are there. Uh, just come and say hi, uh, any of that. Um, also, you can just. Um, also, you can just talk to me via email if anybody wants to talk to me and get ahold of me that way. And any of us, I think, I assume. That's all I have.
Uh, Placer County Flood Control and Water Conservation District meeting was canceled, so we'll look forward to May.
All right, and so with that, I think, oh, oh, I'm sorry. I thought you went, but you didn't.
I don't have anything really new to report for LAFCO for this past month, but we have our LAFCO meeting tomorrow. And supposedly it's supposed to go like all night. So, um, the better part of my Wednesday will probably be, uh, going through MSRs and things of that nature and, um, sphere of influence. So I will have a lot to report for next month, probably. Um, but, um, as far as, uh, public safety, yeah, we had our public safety meeting. She kind of touched on that. Um, I'm trying to remember, and I, and I apologize, today's been a crazy day offline for me. My brain is not working. I got some really bad news at work today. So, um, Amanda may have to share public safety because like I said, my brain is shot. I can't remember anything past two hours ago. Um, not to get into personal stuff, but I, and, um, but I will say that, um, I did go to the Cal Cities Public Safety Committee, uh, meeting, which was actually very fascinating and kind of consuming my whole month because, um, our lobbyist, um, broke her foot and had to have surgery. And then I found out, um, the night before, our vice chair, when I was actually driving to LA, um, his, um, son, um, hurt himself on a ski slope. So I found out while I was literally driving to LA, that it would just be myself and the junior lobbyist. And, but Jason Ryan saved the day. He, um, anybody who knows Jason Ryan from Cal Cities, um, he came in and he did the best he could. He, I mean, he knows a lot about public safety and some of the other things. And we also had Waleed, who was the one that I met regarding housing. Everybody got together and helped us. Um, I, I'm the chair, but they helped me run all of the speakers and things like that. We had the governor's office come in and they were talking about, um, I still don't, offline, I still don't really know how that related to public safety. Um, I don't, I, oh, it was, it was conservatorship for mental health, so it kind of did. But it was really kind of, um, you know, cut and dry and the opposite of cut and dry. See, my brain's not working. But basically, it didn't really relate to our committee, but it was interesting and that was cool. But, um, so that was basically kind of me for the month, that we had our Cal Cities. And it was just the chair and the junior lobbyist and everybody came together and helped us and, um, it was a great team. So that was just kind of my committees for the month. Next month probably will be crazy and I'll have a lot more to report, so.
Thanks. Just real quick, do you have, is there an estimated time when the, um, Loomis' MSR is gonna be done for LAFCO? Do you know?
We have it set for June, right? Did they move it up?
LAFCO has an ambitious, um, goal of having it before, um, the council in July, which I don't think is realistic.
Oh, so they gave us an extra month though? Because they were wanting to move it up to June. Okay.
I, I, I would probably encourage that there probably be some, some really good public engagement on it. You know, because there's a lot of factors that are going into this. Um, just on the surface, you know, there's a potential consideration for a sphere of influence. That would be a recommendation of LAFCO, not the, the council on there, so which the Town of Loomis currently doesn't have one. So it's, um, our, the Town of Loomis is contiguous with our borders. So there's, there's a lot of input I think we, we're gonna need to get from the community as part of this project.
All right, thank you.
So you can reach out to me if you have questions about that and, yeah.
Go for it.
One more thing I forgot. I apologize. Um, I am no longer the school liaison, but I am still very actively, um, connected with them. And I do, I do still go and tour their schools regularly like we were before. And, um, today I toured, um, their facilities, their maintenance facilities that they, um, that they have been able to use at Newcastle. But then we also, which was really impressive what they've done there. And then Ofer. So so far, I have, um, toured Placer, Penrin, and Ofer, and Franklin, and the Charter. And so, um, our next tour will be H. Clark Powers and Loomis Elementary. Um, but I, every single campus has its unique culture. Um, their principals are so incredible and engaging. Um, what's unique about Ofer Elementary is that they have a county program that, they have a significant population of special needs children there. And, um, it is, it is very, I mean, it's amazing. Like the things that they're doing there is really amazing. But as you can imagine, um, what I found out today, that that's like one of the third, I think, oldest schools in the state. And, um, it is definitely not ADA compliant. It really needs some help. So, um, anyways, that'll be changing next year, but very interesting. But the, um, the ways that they have been stewards of what they have and trying to repurpose and refurbish and all of the things that they have done to continue to make good use, um, be good stewards of their finances. I have just, I have been impressed every single time. And so if anybody wanted to go to for a tour, let Erica know. She would be happy to do that.
I was actually, as you were bringing that up, I was thinking it might not be a bad idea to share our volunteer, if, if, if we have, if we have a volunteer list. If we could reach out to them, or if somebody could reach out to them and get volun, get volunteers for the school district. Because I guarantee that they would take them. Yeah. Okay, uh, I think that's it then. All right, let's adjourn this meeting at seven fifty-five. Thank you all for attending.